Hello, sir. You keep bringing me out of the night, man. Make me a drink.
I exercise volunteer so we can be all be in trouble. So we try to cut the concert fee as short as we want to.
Absolutely. It raises objection with whole room. Yeah. Appreciate you bringing this thing up.
Yes, sir. And like I mentioned, you can't. The drawing is done. Yes, not with me, but we look at the plan.
Well, you just need a working copy.
I need it. I want one of your part. You're going to carry it down. That would be three for me. I'm asking which side is that. They're still in darkness. Nice. No, it's supposed to be, yeah. Passing me.
You're having a meeting.
That's more, yeah.
I've got a number.
That guy, he confused himself. Okay. Yeah, I look at that. That would be a challenge. The city is what we believe in California, the city of a strong city, a strong state. It's important, it's important because this is. Business plan. Yeah, what has this short, short. How long did you say?
I can always do that. As long as I'm quoted.
It's not a small state.
Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the city council to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Duper.
Present.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Brower.
Here.
Mayor Pertemore Popescu.
Here.
Mayor Riggsby.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We had a closed session. Mr. City Attorney, would you report it out?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council has been in closed session on the item listed, which was a real property negotiation. The council gave direction to the negotiator for the city and received a report. There's no other action to report at this time.
Thank you. Our next item is the invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilman Duper.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here again tonight to discuss business of our city. Be with us and guide us as we make those decisions. And on this day of recognition for love, please guide us quickly as we may make a home to our significant others. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. Public, this is your turn to speak on any items not on the agenda. Would anyone like to come forward? Looks like everyone passes. We'll deal with conflicts of interest, and I think it does arise tonight on an item. Item number one is deleted. Don't know what it was, but I'm glad it's gone. And consent agenda, consent calendar is available for your motion.
I'll move the consent calendar. I have a question on one item, or actually request.
Okay, proceed.
Was that motion to exclude the item 2.1 that we normally handle?
Oh, yes. Yeah, well, that should be separated out anyway. That shouldn't even be on the consent calendar, but yes, I think definitely we need to exclude that.
I amend the motion accordingly.
Do whatever the city attorney recommends as usual, with my second.
The question I had to do with the demands register and the Southern California Edison bills that we're paying. And I'd like to ask if the city manager can give a report on the benefit financially that we're realizing from all of the solar panels that we've put up and continue to install so we can get some sense for just how much of a benefit that is, because we still have big Southern California Edison bills.
Yes, sir. Be happy to do that.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the consent calendar other than 2.1? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Now we'll proceed to 2.1, and I and someone else will leave, or at least sit back.
I'll go ahead and address 2.1. Do I hear a motion for passage of consent?
I'll make a motion in a minute.
I don't remember who the other conflicting is. You're the one that chose to conflict yourself out, so I don't think anybody else did.
Second.
Having heard a first and a second, seeing the opposition, it so passes.
I think you were right. It was a self-selection. Okay, back to old business, number seven, request to add Stewart Street widening improvement. I think this is a conflict issue.
Yes, sir. At the last 2009 meeting, there's Councilman Duper's, Councilman Daley, and Councilman Popescu on the selection on the panel.
I think it would have to be 2010, since Mr. Duper was not on the council in 2009.
Yes, it was no, I'm sorry. I make it quick.
They won't even be able to sit down. All right, we'll go ahead and proceed. Do you want to go ahead and give a support, Mr. Taipei?
Yes, sir. Back in 2009, RDA board did authorize the expenditures of $2 million for the city to work with university for Stewart Street improvement, which include widening the street, traffic signal improvement at the intersection of Stewart and Campus, Stewart and Anderson, and relocate the existing utilities, and widen the street from two lane to four lane, install retaining walls and so forth. But since then, now we no longer have RDA, so we no longer have the $2 million for the project. The city, I feel that the city is still responsible for the street improvement, at least at intersection of Anderson and Stewart Street, where we're supposed to widen the westbound Stewart Street to add the right turn pocket for the traffic can turn right going north on Anderson. Also add a right turn pocket on southbound Anderson for the traffic to turn right onto westbound Stewart Street. And also widen Stewart Street westbound at the Campus Street so that the traffic can turn north onto Stewart Street. So I think the city is still bear some responsibility for the improvement to the street. I went back to take a look at the budget. We do have the revenue from Measure I, which is the half cent sale tax that we receive from the county, sale tax. Approximately, we receive about $250,000 a year for this Measure I. That money can only be used for street improvement. And in the past, we've been using for pavement rehabilitation. For this year, for example, we used to Cerro Seal, Mountain View, Cerro Seal, Redlands Boulevard, Beaumont, and Pablo Street. And I did an investigation and look around. Our street improvement are in pretty good condition. Our street are in pretty good condition. So therefore, I think that we can allocate two years of this funding to go toward Stewart Street improvement. And then university, we have to come up with the rest of the funding to complete the improvement. The city staff will manage the project. At the beginning, we planned to contract out the construction management to outside engineering firm. And now, we think that we can do it in-house. We still have to contract out construction inspection, construction inspection for the structure, which is the bridge, the retaining wall. We still had to contract out for construction staking, land survey. Had to contract out the geotechnical testing for the soil report, compaction test and so forth. But the city will be lead agency, and the council approve this $500,000, and we can proceed with the project. And of course, with the university agree to come up with the funding to complete the project. And staff recommendation is we add Stewart Street to the Measure I funding plan.
Two quick questions. Number one, the staff report said two years worth of Measure I funding, which should be 500,000. The staff report says 250,000. So I think you probably meant to put 500.
Per year.
Yeah, but it says, I see. It just didn't total it. The total is 500,000.
Yes.
The other question I had, if we move forward with this, will the actual project itself come back to us again? Or is that just, we're at a point where they're just proceeding with?
It will come back to you to award the contract for?
Okay, once we find?
For the construction, actual construction of the project and award a contract for inspectors and geotechnical.
Thank you.
Where's the university at with us? Are they willing to partner this way?
We have.
Are you prepared to make a?
Dick Archman University, privileged to be back meeting with you again. Yeah, this is the first step. It's going to be a huge challenge for us, because this is kicking our portion from at least 4 million up to five or more. We appreciate very much the city coming forward and keeping it a city project and doing this. You didn't mention Jar, but I think this includes trying to keep Verizon on target.
Yes, sir.
To do their portion as well, which we may lose if it becomes our project. Our intent is to, with this momentum from the city, is then to go back and probably raise a million if we can in naming gifts for the bridge out of philanthropy to make up with the city's portion close to the original 2 million from the city, and then try to commit the 4 million out of a variety of other funding sources, including our new vehicle registration fee, which we just passed, that will be generating some revenue for various infrastructure improvement projects. So I cannot say for sure, Phil, that we can do this. We have a board meeting in two weeks, and our intent would be if this moves forward tonight, then to take a plan forward to that board and seek to get their approval pending the philanthropy portion.
And I recommend that there will be an agreement between the city and university for the funding, for the drawdown of the funding and so forth.
Well, this has been a long time coming, and it needs to happen. And unfortunately, we got a little derailed with the RDA issue, but I make a motion. Do we approve this?
No, second. With a couple of questions. What's the timetable on this? I mean, we've talked about it for a long time, and now with the losing the RDA money, that's a setback both for you and for us. What kind of timetable are we anticipating?
I mean, Jar can speak to that. We think we have a chance of sticking with the original timeline ahead with the RDA money, but go ahead.
Yes, sir. My plan is going to start construction, at least Phase One, this summer. We have been working with Verizon, and so the first thing is by next month, we should be seeing Verizon start putting in the temporary pole so that they can put the existing utility underground, above ground. And then that will be first task for the improvement. And then the city will come in and start removing the, relocating the existing water main or put in temporary water line, and then start excavation the street. I'm looking at start this summer, probably in May or June, so that we take advantage of during the university close for summer break and push very hard to get this thing going. Now, I still have to work with Ken to see if we can close Stewart Street off and use the university court as a thoroughfare like we did when we did the water main.
And for those who've been by there, you've noticed we've been having to beef up the tunnel across the east end of the university court, well, the west end of the road part, because we didn't feel that tunnel could handle traffic once again. So that will be done shortly, and so that tunnel will be ready to reopen and traffic come across university.
So this way, we don't have, at first we planned to do it during the two summer, but if we can close Stewart Street during construction, that will make the construction go a lot faster.
And when you say construction, moving water main and so forth, are you talking about closing Stewart Street again during the summer months when there's theoretically at least less traffic?
No, sir. As matter of fact, now that we can close Stewart Street and use university court as a main thoroughfare, we can close Stewart Street off during the duration of construction.
And what do we estimate that to be?
It's probably take a year. Because there's a lot of landscape, it's a lot of work, include landscaping and so forth.
During that time, we consider the dental school as a separate country and apart from everything else, so.
As we all know. I'm questioning, we have the potential, at least hopeful, construction of the church right on the corner of university court and campus, too. That's going to work out okay? Or we'll deal with it when we?
We have to deal with it, yes.
I think if I can comment, Ron, we don't know their timeline for sure. We certainly plan to put a cul-de-sac in on that end of University Avenue when their construction is done and when we're finished with University Avenue. So that would be the time to do that.
Okay, my last question is, the Measure I money, is that fund currently depleted? In other words, we're going to save up $250,000 towards this, or we've got money there?
Right now, we have about $300,000 in the fund balance. But I'm not giving that away. I'm just going to use the two coming years. So what we have to do is use the fund balance to get going, and then when the money come in, put that back in fund balance.
Thank you.
I just need a little cash flow. Yeah, like you know.
As do we.
All right, thank you. So I hear a motion, a second. My only comment is that obviously this is a project that we should have done probably four or five years ago. It's unfortunate we weren't able to contribute more, but I think the public needs to be aware of the fact that what's happening here is we're building a road and university is paying for 90% of it, basically. So we are grateful for that. We're contributing very little to this project compared to how much you're contributing to a road that's going to benefit all of us, so we're really appreciative of that. I'm in favor of it, so seeing the opposition, it so passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I take it we're done with number seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number eight, report and recommendation pertaining to the city-owned 60-acre Orange Grove. City manager.
Yes, sir. You remember back in August of 2010, the RDA board did authorize the expenditures from the RDA fund to irrigate the city, I mean, RDA-owned properties on the property on the south side of Redlands Boulevard and north of Mission Road that currently is Orange Grove, where the RDA owned approximately 60 acres of land. It costs the RDA about $4,200 a month to irrigate that. And so now that the land is no longer belong to the city RDA, is now go to this successor agency where we're supposed to wind out and sell the property off and give the money to the state. And we also don't have the money in the RDA fund to continue water the Orange Grove. So the staff recommend that the city, as a successor agency, just continue to purchase the water to water the Orange Grove on Redlands Boulevard and the land owned by, between Redlands and Mission Road. As in my report.
Can I move it?
I'll go ahead and second that. I would like to get a consensus.
If you second it, you can't oppose it.
There's nothing to oppose. What I would just entertain is, I understand the motion is that we move, that we no longer water the Orange Groves. I would like consensus from the council that we at least direct staff to look at alternative sources, even though the land may not be sold for a while. We want to at least try to maintain it to a level so those trees don't die right away, so.
Yes.
I would like consensus from the council that we, the staff, look at alternatives, public or private. The state is a huge proponent of attempting to save open space, agricultural land. I've talked to many residents who are sad to see the oranges disappear. They probably will eventually, but in the meantime, we should try to do what we can to figure out some other funding. So I would like to see staff look at other funding sources if it's possible. Thank you.
Sorry. Along that line, I recall last year when we had this item for discussion, there was mention of being able to maintain at least one or two rows of trees. Is that still consistent with this proposal?
Yes, sir. I would like to maintain at least two rows of orange tree along the north side of Mission Road, and also maintain the Orange Grove behind the Heritage Park. The city still own the Heritage Park property, so we still plan to maintain those orange trees.
So the action with the reductions for the water bill as mentioned would include maintaining that perimeter and the park?
Yes, sir. What I plan to do is stop purchase of water and volunteer my city staff to install irrigation drip system to water orange trees behind Heritage Park and maybe two rows or three rows of orange trees north of Mission Road.
With that clarification, I definitely support it. Again, it's all of us, you know, wish we had other choices, but we have to be fiscally responsible.
I would just ask that the staff provide us some report with an effort that they've made of trying to find alternative sources, so we know that we've exhausted all of our options. And if we are successful, obviously let us know, so we know.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Could you clarify just what you're requesting? I'm reading the staff report that says discontinuing the irrigation system would take one year before we would actually see it have an effect.
Correct, but I?
So we've got time and?
Correct. I don't want to see the oranges die without a lack of water, especially if we have opportunity to have someone else water it. So what I would like the staff to do is look into seeing if there's any other sources out there, private or public, that'd be, we would be able to have access to. We're not paying the $50,000 to continue to maintain it until it gets sold off, but maybe someone else may. So I would like the staff to look into that. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. In the past, you said, or somebody said, an expert on oranges, that you could water them minimally and keep them alive, but not producing any fruit. Is that a possibility?
That what we're doing right now, because I talked to J.J. Romero's staff, and the reason he came to us, asked us to help pay for the water bill is because those trees are old, they're not producing as much, and so the money that they made from selling the oranges is not enough to maintain the growth. And because right now, it's at the life of, the trees at the life of, I don't know what the word is. Yeah, I want it. End of life, yes, so. And he told me that it would take approximately, if we stopped watering right now, it would take about a year to the trees to die because of, you know, we still in the rainy season, and it's not going to die right away. And what my plan to do is, I'm going to wait maybe another seven, eight months, and then we will find somebody who willing to come out and remove the trees for free so that they can use the trees as the firewood and keep that.
Yeah, I'm hesitant to do anything with the land that doesn't belong to us, other than trying to preserve it.
No, what happened, if we don't do that, then I'm going to have a problem with my fire chief there.
After they're dead.
Because it's a fire hazard.
It's going to show up on our weed abatement list.
Just, I'm not sure that the state is already taking this land away from us. I don't want to be incurring additional costs of cutting down thousands of trees. Let them take care of that. Let them incur that cost.
Well, I think they would anyway, but my other question is, in reference to what Councilman Popescu said, are we trespassing on this property?
Again, we are successor agency, really. We are the one who's supposed to be, take care of it until we get rid of it.
Well, I understand the counties are putting together the successor agencies, and we are, we have declared ourselves to be, but does the state law?
No, we're the interim successor agency until the?
Is that per state law, or is that?
Until the oversight.
Or is that just a?
That's your?
Is that just a patch?
We're confusing the two terms. Successor agency is what we are, and the oversight committee is what takes over once that's formed.
That's right.
Thank you, Attorney Duper. Yeah. Yeah, the clerk was queuing you, and the city attorney was queuing me, so we'll see who wins. I know where I place my bets. Okay. So there's a motion, and a second, there seems to be support. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Okay, is there any opposition? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. There's no new business. Are there any reports of councilmen?
I guess I could just add a quick little thing. We appreciate everybody who does business in Loma Linda. We wanted to continue to encourage them to, you know, buy their goods and services in the city because it does help us and our businesses. That's all.
If I could ask a question also, we have the farmer's market out here on Sundays, and some Sundays it looks like it's thriving, other Sundays it's pretty... How are they doing overall?
I did talk to Phil Carlyle about that, and they do make money out of the farmer market.
Because it's a nice service, and they've got wonderful...
Yes.
Fruits and vegetables out there.
Yes. And yes, they're planning to continue to have that farmer market.
Good, yes.
Especially right now, they really need the money.
Yeah. Well, I think it's time for the shameless plug. I used a service in Loma Linda this last week that was very well done, professional, fast, and that's West Coast Smog. So if you need to have your car smogged, if you want the best, go to West. And lots of great restaurants. You know, I was intrigued to hear people say, "We need to bring in really good restaurants." Well, we've got a lot of really good restaurants, most of them ethnic, so no need to eat anywhere else but Loma Linda. Okay, are there any reports of officers? Okay, then, city council is adjourned, and we'll move to housing, housing authority. Call it to order. Do we have to do a roll call, or we use the current roll? Okay, are there any items to be added or deleted on that agenda?
No, sir. Go ahead and move, I'm sorry.
I need to do the oral report. Public, this is your chance to speak up again. You get three shots per meeting. Speak up for the housing authority. Any item not on the agenda? Hearing none. Okay, now the minutes are there for your approval.
I'll go ahead and move the consent calendar.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none is passed. Are there any chair member reports? Any reports of officers? Okay, we're adjourned. Now we'll move to the successor agency of the RDA. And who's in charge of this?
You are.
Really? Captain Papescu, you've relinquished...
Oh, you were trying to put me in charge? No, you're doing fine job. Keep it...
You're the one who was at the helm when the ship sank, so I was just wondering.
I'm leaving you the lifeboat.
Mr. Mayor, I think part of the state's plan was to dethrone him.
Okay. It was very well done.
And for other agency chairman.
Okay, we'll go with the roll that we called earlier. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Public, this is your third and final chance to speak up. Any items not on the agenda? I don't see any takers. Okay, we have the consent calendar.
I'll go ahead and move it.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. No old business, no new business, no reports of whatever we are, and we're adjourned.
And Councilman Duper got his prayer answered?
Yes. Go to your loved ones.